So it's six o'clock, you guys ready? I guess we'll call the meeting to order. An agenda of the meeting, we adopted, is circulated. It is July 9th, the current meeting of the whole meeting. Six oh one, we start the meeting.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to add two items to the agenda.
What items?
One item would be personnel in camera. I think you already have one, so I'd just like to have an additional discussion there about something.
Okay.
And also, the meeting date of July 25th.
Yes.
We're supposed, there's a planned 2050 meeting, that same day, at three o'clock. And I'm wondering if we can either change our meeting date or move it to seven o'clock.
All right, and I'll answer that question.
Okay.
The second meeting in July and August are canceled. The council adopted that by resolution.
Oh, okay, so then we don't have to issue. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. We're good.
Okay.
Don't need to add it.
So first up is the RCMP, Mitch Tuckett.
Good evening. I trust that everyone received a copy of the second quarter report. Okay. I'll touch on some of the increases that I typically do. Starting at the top, fatal collisions from two at this time last quarter. Those were both obviously fatal collisions that resulted in a fatality. One was in Northern Sacramento, a solo occupant of a vehicle and struck a sign barrier and died shortly after. And then the second one was on Highway eight at Northern Cumberland Road. The two vehicle collisions were when the individual was deceased. And going down the list, significant increase in Mental Health Act, calls for service. We're seeing this in really all of our jurisdictions across the board. It's becoming a pretty significant, you know, impact or has a significant impact on our resources. These range from Form Two applications or Form Two documents that are, it'll lead us to having to locate and arrest individuals to take them in for a medical assessment. Suicidal individuals that are struggling emotionally that will have to either provide some support to have seen or, you know, perhaps take them to a hospital. So these really, you know, they range, but certainly a significant number of them will have passed three months. So, and again, very much similar numbers to other jurisdictions. And, you know, we're working with the hospital in Selkirk as far as how to, you know, maybe lower our wait times at hospitals. You know, when we make these arrests, we can only turn them over to other peace officers. And so that would be often, or it could result in us having to wait a significant amount of time. So, you know, challenging healthcare with the wait times, it went off, and we're not able to necessarily jump the line because as far as triaging these individuals where there's patients that are in need of acute care. So again, any questions on that?
Well, I was just wondering if you, I was talking to East St. Paul peace officers, and they're helping in that. How long, first of all, how long they've been there? And they're sort of coordinating with you uncertain things? Like, is that one of the things that they're coordinating with you on?
Yeah, like the province has created a program. They have the institutional safety officers, which are the peace officers that will be in HSC or other healthcare facilities. There's the community safety officers, which are at East St. Paul, for instance. And then there's First Nations safety officers. So, you know, they call it a tiered placing model where those peace officers can take some of the onus off, you know, regular members and peace officers. And that's one thing that, you know, that's a possibility when we say we have to, like, the Mental Health Act only allows us to turn these individuals over to another peace officer or by the law, save them and or clear us. So we're looking at ways to advocate along with the hospital to, you know, push for that to happen because me and Selkirk in general, we're, I kind of recall the stats, but like we're there, you know, three times a week on average, like I would say, if not more. And it's a drain. So we're having to really advocate as far as what we can do to take the pressure off of us and then really provide these individuals with the support they need, so.
Do you have to wait at the hospital until you can turn them over to a peace officer?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so if you had a peace officer in the area, you could just turn them over right there and then they can go to the hospital with them without?
Possibly. Yeah, I mean, it depends on case by case. I mean, some of these individuals are higher needs, like when it comes to violence or is acting out or not. But certainly there's options, like, you know, if maybe they go online, it would be what we want to see happen. Like, they go help, the science center has, you know, institutional safety officers that are equipped with certain intervention options and training that they can take over and manage to do in situations. And, you know, at Selkirk, for instance, they have a third party guard, like a garda or something. So we're definitely, you know, aware of all the drain and working with who we can to lower it and come up with some solutions along with that, so.
I understand the peace officers can also give out speeding tickets in the community. Is that true?
Yeah, like there, if you look at the community safety officer legislation, which is pretty much about medical justice, there is certain things or certain pieces of the human, or the Highway Traffic Act that can enforce. That would be something that would be, you know, interesting for you to look into as far as options within the community, like, you know, they can assist with, you know, traffic enforcement on occasion or depending on the legislation, you know, just being in control all these years or that kind of thing.
So you're working with West St. Paul right now on this program?
East St. Paul.
I mean, East St. Paul. What's their availability to you guys? Like, are they available 24/7 or?
Well, they work shifts. You know, they work, I don't recall exactly the shift they work, but they vary between days and evenings, really like, you know, the needs of the community. And they do traffic enforcement and other bylaw enforcement, so they're, they're comfortable to have, yeah.
Okay, great. And you say that's under the legislation of community safety officers?
Yeah, like through medical justice, there's a whole, yeah, like there's an act, it's the Community Safety Officer Act, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
So moving along to assaults, with slight increase in assaults. These were one at the River Crest, there was a spousal assault, a child abuse case, which was historic in nature, and then a father-son family dispute that we attended too. So nothing, you know, significantly increased. The one sexual assault that showed in here over the last year, this was a historic report that was made, and it was a domestic situation, so that one was under investigation as well. The increase in property, theft of property over $5,000. So I looked through these ones, and yeah, a lot of the same type of thefts I've seen as, you know, in the past. Amazon packages, thefts from construction sites, too many odd ones. There was a bathroom fixture that was stolen from a house, we called it a day seat, some different, some floors, significantly a lot of flooring. So again, I'm going to work with our NCO group and really come up with some. And I know we had, I talked previously about what's a mapping. I think that's something that I really, we're risk starting to build it now because I would like to start overlaying the quarters and because we really feel that looking at some of these addresses, a lot of these are being likely done by the same people. So we'll continue to work on that. Yeah, and again, you know, thefts from vehicles, wallets being left in unlocked vehicles overnight, some, you know, dis-awareness on that. Yeah, there's the construction site on Pipeline Road, and there were a couple of thefts from there actually. That's a few, one easel.
Okay. I got a question for you. The flooring one, I know who filed the complaint because he's a friend of mine. And he had pictures of the truck, the license plate and everything, but he said that nothing can be done because he wasn't caught in the act, even though you can see all the flooring sticking out of the truck and everything like that?
Okay.
So is that, is that true? Like, because the guy wasn't, you know, he wasn't caught in the act, even though you have a picture of the flooring sticking out of the vehicle and the plate and everything?
Yeah, I mean, quite often, I'd have to look a little bit deeper to that, but quite often they'll steal a license plate and put it on the vehicle. So that happens more often than not. They'll take a license plate and then they'll get the license plate, bury it, and they'll come back to the vehicle that's, that it takes from the stolen. And actually, two of the theft under $5,000 were stolen license plates. So it's quite a common thing, but I'll sort of look into that one. And again, just moving through the theft under $5,000, that's, yeah, the, a lot of the same type of thefts as in the past, but certainly enough to show an increase. And I think we need to bring back our late night controls and initiatives that we had some success with over the last year or so. And that, you know, this was really into the break in enters as well. We saw an increase in residential and commercial break in enters. The numbers are a little bit misconceiving in the sense that, or misleading, I should say, in the sense that some of them were unfounded, like a suspicious vehicle was seen leaving a commercial area, the vehicle was followed, located by police, and it turned out that they were up there or they had some association to the locations. So a couple of them were unfounded and, you know, determined to be, in fact, a break in enter. But yeah, the construction site, a couple of sheds were broken with different locations. A portable classroom at East St. Paul School was broken into where some electronics were stolen. So, you know, enough to, out of the nine, there's about four that were in fact true break in enter and thefts. But again, enough that we'll look at, you know, some different shifting and some different controls focusing on all these areas along with some of the mapping that we can do, so. And then moving down to the mischief of the property, again, these are along the same lines. A lot of these, I think, overlap. A lot of vehicles being smashed, windows, you know, parked cars throughout the night, construction sites, it's in green halls. So again, just some, would say penny mischief, but just things that, you know, would hopefully be deterred by some controls and some presence in the area. So we'll look at the Royal, some of those are speaking to a couple of our members tonight, and we'll look at some of those initiatives as well, so. But that's, which are basically the highlights, so if there's any questions.
I was wondering, speaking of patrols, and I'm just looking here at the objective, you know, enhanced road safety, like popping in, going into a lot of the newer developments, older developments, but like more often, like, we have some residents, a guy sent me a file that, you know, it's marking every, he's marked, he's checked every time, but our CFP car has come through his development. And it's pretty scary to show, to see that, you know, he's got it on his video, and he says, I can tell you how many times a week it comes through here, especially on areas where they're noticing break in enters. People are flying around the streets. It's, I'm just going to use an example, you know, turning off Main onto Parkview now. Instead of the trucks turning onto Capitolus where they're supposed to be turning onto Capitolus, you know, to bypass the perimeter, they're driving straight through residential development. And they're going, some of them are going at a, at a good speed to, okay, that's probably not you, that's probably DOT guys going in there. But I think it's places like the trails, you know, it's, people are driving through there way too fast.
Yeah, and I can certainly share this with our traffic services that are basically East St. Paul, and they have the ability to move around and do some focus enforcement. So if you could just repeat those areas and I'll certainly send those.
I'm just going by the areas that I've just been watching for the last couple of weeks. It's Park Viewpoint and the trails, the trails of West St. Paul.
Trails of speeders.
Trails of speeders, yeah, that's, you know, you hear them come off Main Street, and I stood there for a few hours one day, and I actually stopped somebody. And it's, a lot of times, I hate to say it, but it's people that live in there. And you can hear them coming off Main Street, and their foot's right on the gas.
Yeah, and I know we did, you know, kind of took tickets and used and stops, and at one point, in some areas, I was concerned that we did learn that many of them are the residents of the area. So it's, yeah, something that, you know, I don't know what it's going to take, but it's, taking tickets sometimes just doesn't do it, but.
But you saw there was an incident in the trails there where a vehicle went through a house.
Yeah.
You know, that's on a corner, like, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Foot slipped off the brake, gone to the gas, and still, in two house lines, you went through two walls of a house, so, you know, it's, something's going to happen. There is. But thanks for the report. We did have some of those.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jack, these staffs are good. Hard to hear that the mapping is underway and that you're going to be looking to relay some, like, I'm particularly interested in the theft of property, the break in enter, those types of statistics with the mapping. If you could add to your list, I've received a complaint from a resident who lives on Willis Road by Stevens Lane, and it's the traffic that's going westbound towards McPhillips on Willis. Residents reporting that the vehicles are going quick, quick. He's thinking, oh, we're a commerce and arrow. So it's, it's a bit of a speedway, but I guess he there. I think it's probably 60, but.
I just, just one question. You'd, and I don't know if it was just, you had said that there was a break in at a portable. Was that at the West St. Paul portable, but you said East St. Paul?
East St. Paul.
Oh, East St. Paul, okay.
So, did I hear, have you been doing speech check step with Charles or Eddie?
No, not that I could speak to like that doesn't mean that, like, our traffic services, they have a contained event that resides in the St. Paul office that do, you know, rolling patrols, so they're, they do the perimeter and areas and all that. I'll certainly send something to our team as well as the traffic team so they can, you know, make some patrols up and some of those traffic issues.
Any other questions?
We have a, one? Mayor Trujan, I was just going to call you board member. We have an item here, traffic calming on 4.8.1. Is that something we can speak to now?
No, it was in camera, I believe.
No, it's not in camera. Does it relate at all to our topic right now?
Some of it, but there's some stuff that, yeah.
Okay. I just thought while we have the sergeant here that maybe he can shed some light on it or no?
No, we'll cover it off at the next, when it comes on in general.
Okay, sure.
So, thank you for coming.
Yeah, I apologize, I've really looked at the resources, but I'm glad to say, or happy to look for it, because we have a number of new members coming into the country. Of these seven vacancies, we have seven people identified to come in, starting, we had one start on Friday, and we're tracking in between now and the fall. So we're excited to have a member join our team and be able to provide some initial service to the communities.
That's good to hear, you'll be close to full complement.
Yeah, you know, I've been here for over a year now, we haven't seen that, so I'm looking forward to it. However long it lasts.
That's not jigsaw, right?
Yeah.
Have a safe evening.
So next on agenda is Paul.
Make them both go up. You're both speaking, you just come up and say.
Goldie Gooming, 41 Breckenway, West St. Paul, I'm with the GSO.
I'm Jason, and I fully think I have this.
Okay, Andrew.
Okay, so this is regarding our small residential development of Grassland.
Yes.
Okay, 41 Grassland. We had a subdivision, and these only approved last year with previous council for 19 single-family lots, approximately 1.5 acres.
Was that last year or the year before? Was it, it was still while Mayor Sherrill was here?
Yes, yeah, with the previous council, yeah.
Because I know you're coming up for an extension.
Yes.
For approval, so that means you've come up to the two-year mark.
Yeah, two-year mark, yes, yes.
Okay.
And with conservation of, with some community members, neighbors, and we discovered that holding tanks is a major issue, and people do not like to buy lots that has holding tanks in it. And we would like to have more bigger lots. There is no lots last year we didn't find any. That was two acres where you're allowed to have septic field, there was none of it in West St. Paul. So we would like to, we redesigned the development to have two acre lots instead of 1.125. So we're losing four lots now instead of 19, they're 15. And we checked with MIT and Mandelkamp Conservation, they're okay with the site change, and Conservation will allow us to have septic fields as long as we leave a requirement that's 200 feet frontage and, you know, that side. So we didn't have the DIT sign, so would like to, we checked with our PD, and we were suggested that under the section 125-3 of Planning Act Council can add a new condition to the previous approved, meaning that they can add a condition requiring the number of lots to be reduced to 15 in four. If council does that, then I, then we don't see there being requirement for another public hearing. So if we go with the public hearing, it's another seven months to a year. And since we are making less number of lots, if we request the council to look at it, if this can be added, it will save us a lot of time and effort. And so, and there is no bigger lots available for the residents, so we can get this development going as soon as possible.
Any questions?
Just a comment, I believe Counsel Fivert, was it, you brought up the holding tanks?
Yeah, it's a real problem. There's a lot of people pumping their raw sewage into the ditches because there's so many pumpouts. It's been, it's been a real problem in that area with holding tanks. So this would be a wonderful welcome change. And I know that on the agenda that I saw today that you have an extension pending, so if we were to, you know, look at this, I think it's on our agenda for Thursday, we can make some changes without having to do the public hearing. Again, because you're really doing the same thing, you're just making bigger lots rather than smaller lots. Yeah, so it is under the Planning Act, it can't be done, is my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for coming forward. I just, this is my first time looking at this subdivision. So just on Siler, you have homes, it looks like they're backing on to, like, the backs of the homes would be on Siler, and the backs of homes potentially on Grassland. Will there be a fence that's part of the development?
That was part of the development agreement. And it was never signed, so we can discuss that if there's a requirement, we will be up.
And then just in terms of like landscaping, like trees on lots, will that be, is that also part of your development agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Just to the planner or I guess anyone. So because we're downsizing the number of the lots, just to make sure this wouldn't lead to a public hearing or anything, because I, this is great to go to septic fields because I think that's what we all get a lot of calls on is, you know, when is sewer coming to this area? You know, the pumpouts are going up and up and up with cost. So I just want to confirm with our planner or whoever else can answer me back there, would we need to do that again or?
No, it would, it would be okay. It wouldn't have to go to a public hearing because you would be reducing the intensity and everything else would remain the same. Like, the roads would still be in the same place, same dimensions, that kind of stuff.
No, that's, that's good, I'm good with that, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Just one last question. How do you pronounce the road that you're looking to name?
Boyd.
Pardon me?
Boyd, it is the name available from.
So just to borrow our.
Yeah, we have roads available, so that's the road name.
That's a different road.
Boyd, is it?
Boyd. B is Boyd, O-Y.
Oh, Boyd, Boyd.
Boyd, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it looks good. I mean, we, we have some developers come and ask for redesignation to two acre lots. Didn't pass through the province, so it's nice to see these two acre lots. I think it would be great addition. Yeah.
Just to clarify, so your old subdivision that was, 19 acres, that was, I don't know if it's to which one, Siler or?
Same.
Or Siler. So this new one, I think, is still coming off Siler?
Yes. We're not changing the layout, it's, roads, I think, will remain the same, it's just the size of the lots and number of lots, obviously.
Yeah, you haven't changed the layout of that property?
No.
Okay.
The lots are just bigger.
Yeah, no, I was looking at it earlier, and I thought you did change the layouts on the last one, but you just highlighted it more.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's why, yes. It's in bold red here, the words, okay. Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Yep, so thanks for explaining your rationale for it, appreciate it, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that touches over down to 4.1, Whistle Hollow Playground and Park.
Yeah, so the, so the report itself is for the award of the Whistle Hollow Playground and Park tender. The Playground and Park project consists of a supply of playground structures, pea gravel bays, border, and some topsail and sodding. We've been in the process of bringing in some fill and building the lot up to grade, sort of in anticipation of this. Five submissions were received, and of all those, the lowest bid was Playgrounds Over Us with a bid of $103,022, including PST, but not a GST. And it has, they have a listed starting date of October 1st, but realistically, they could probably get going on some of the landscaping in advance of that. And depending on when the product bill arrives, the unit arrives, they should be able to mobilize maybe even earlier than that, hopefully. So the recommendation is, all this report is to make an award to Playgrounds Over Us at a cost of $103,022.
So waiting for this, we're still going to get on with the landscaping on the rest of the property?
Yes.
Leveling it, getting it seeded and everything like that? And it's just a matter of when this comes in, they'll have the, not pad, but you know, the pea gravel area pretty well ready to put it down?
Yeah.
I doubt they'll do any seeding or anything because it's, you know, it's going to get damaged in installation, so I, as much as I- I, I doubt they'll do any seeding or anything, cause it's, you know, it's gonna get damaged in installation, so I, as much as I would love to...
The grading, the grading is underway now, and, and the grading and leveling is underway now. Some, some, to your point Counsel, the, the, the tops are oil, or pardon me, the, the sodding won't take place until the structure is completed. But some of the pea gravel base and some of the foundation base and some of the perimeter landscaping, they can, they can do ahead of time in the prep, yeah.
Just get it, getting it going.
So, um, my question is, we, we always get these nice concept plans. And then we get something completely different. Can we go into the, to a concept plan that kind of looks like that? I mean, I know there's, there's a creek there and there's a house beside it, but is that portion that's on this gravel, is that what it's gonna look like?
That, that's a concept drawing that they provided and, um, the equipment as specified is listed in the report. So the, the particular units are listed in the report. Looking at, uh, two double, uh, swoosh slides, a loop ladder, a leg lift, a pilot panel, storefront panel, upper and lower level decks, deck, uh, to deck tunnel, uh, summit climber, a transfer module point, two, um, uh, dig rider and, uh, dig rider riders and one eight-foot high swing with two bucket seats and two belt suites seats, so...
Is the base gonna be gravel?
Pea gravel.
Okay, alright. Good, alright.
Any other question?
Um, my only question was like, you know, I don't speak, uh, playgrounds or what, like I don't know what a leg lift is, I was just curious, you know, if that's something that's, uh, you know, some sort of workout equipment, I find, you know, I've, we've done the, you know, research and asked the questions. We always find that that stuff is seldom, seldom used, or if it's, I just don't know what that, that is, I'm just kinda curious.
Yeah, um, you know, to be honest, I'm not a hundred certain what that particular piece involves.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of these things are sort of the standard types of things on, on playground type of equipment. It's a, I don't, it's not meant as an exercise structure, but it's, uh, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's the standard type of, um, pieces of equipment that come with these units.
So I got some, um, comments here, I guess. When I look at the tender...
I don't know what that is, what is it?
Is that the? It's a grab bar. It's not an exercise.
Oh, it's a, I, I, according to their, uh, their package, it's a grab bar where you can hang on the bar and bring your legs up and dangle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, kind of almost like a monkey bar, it's kind of, yeah.
Yes, so when I look at the tender, there was no, uh, price thing, what was acceptable and what wasn't. And then I look at this, uh, under submitted and three of them are within pretty close, hundred and twenty-four thousand, hundred and twenty-six thousand, hundred and thirty-one thousand. One of them is roughly twenty percent lower than the rest of them, so I guess that's sort of one of like, what, why is there such a big difference? If they followed this, if they followed the specifications on the tender, they should, they should be using the same equipment they should be using. So I guess, is the hundred and three thousand dollar playground inferior to the hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Well, I knew, uh, Mayor, I know doing work with J.D. Penner, they're typically higher. They're always higher, and that goes to profitability too.
That's okay, but there is, uh, two other ones that still fall within the ballpark.
Yeah.
I mean, are they all that, like why are they higher, that much higher than?
Yeah, Playgrounds Over Us are, are a reputable provider and, um, uh, they, uh, I mean, there could be a host of reasons why their bids are coming in lower. I mean, their delivery date is a little bit later than some of the other two. And, uh, and so, uh, perhaps that's got some to do with it in terms of their scheduling. Uh, maybe their crews are freed up at that point and, and they're able to make them, bring them in at, um, at, at some, at, at a more competitive pricing. So, but they did meet spec, the spec did outline what the, the individual components of the, the project were and, um, and they'll be held to it.
Mister Mayor, maybe, maybe it'd be good for Thursday's meeting if you could, uh, just share with us the, uh, the other, you know, like this has the, the equipment included, what's included? If, if you had for the others, uh, what, what was included, just to give the council so that we could just take a look at that.
This was, this was from the tender.
Yeah, I don't know why, why we're, why we're getting in the weeds about this one, we just saved ourselves twenty thousand dollars. Do we, do we, um, ask for the materials on the paving contract when we are lower? No, we don't, we're just happy it's lower, cause we've given them the specifications, what we wanna do, they've met the specifications as per our, our tender. We should be happy it's twenty thousand dollars lower than the next guy.
That's true, but, you know, usually the cheapest is always a reason for it. Like, you know, when you go out for a contract pricing, they always say you get three or four contract, you always, you always get the three or four pricing. And they also all fall within one, if one is really low, then that should raise the red flag and saying why is it really low, so...
Not necessarily, because when we bid on jobs, it, sometimes we're the, the lowest bidder and the other guys have made a mistake or have added stuff that they didn't need to add. And they are putting in more profitability on their tender than we are. We might be putting ten percent, they might be putting fifteen to twenty percent on their profitability. So it's, it can be a dozen of these or a dozen of those, doesn't mean that you're getting cheap things. You've specified exactly what you want. I mean, the only thing you can dig on this is, you can say who's supplying you with the playground material, like who's your manufacturer? And compare it with the other manufacturer, but that's really all that, that's gonna be different here, is who's manufacturing the, the playground.
Also on the pricing, i- if the CAO said it, the other ones are starting, you know, commence in August. This isn't to October where they're, you know, they're keeping their employees working, you know, to keep them as far as they can, knowing they have a job. You know, to carry them over, to get their hours, whatever they need to go into for seasonal, you know? So, yeah, I'm not, I don't know if I need to see everything, it's, as long as we can have the drawing and have it close to that and have it. It, it's a reputable company, we've used them before, we haven't had any problems with them, so...
I guess the other thing that, um, a little nervous on is the date that they're starting, they're starting in October, these other ones start sooner than that. So that means, are they gonna be finished by the end of October? Cause people in Whistle Hollow, they're looking for this playground. And, uh, I don't know where they're sitting when they find out that they're gonna get it at the end of the year, as opposed to having some time to play on it this year. That's other issues, cause some of these, if you take a look at some of them, they're starting up in September third, August twentieth. And the last one's starting up after, he says Oc- October first, you know, that's, I guess that's when he gets his playground in. But what happens if he doesn't get it in? What happens if it winds up in October fifteenth and doesn't get in? The winter comes, snow falls at the end of October.
Yeah, but you have to put that in your tender then. You, you, you can't say, okay, this guy's, you know, got a, the tender's a hundred and three thousand. Okay, but by the way, now we want it right away, right? So, e- even in construction, sometimes they'll, the order will tell us, you know, we want this, like, in four weeks or six weeks. They'll say, well, we can't do that, we can do it in this timeframe, right? So, sometimes you can't, if, if you haven't put it in your tender that you want the work date to start immediately, you can now not go back and say, okay, well, you have to start that immediately, because they're trying to get, do their, schedule their work properly. So if we haven't specified it, we can't turn around and say, now we are specifying it. They're fitting it, they're fitting it into their work schedule, that's what they're trying to do.
No, I'm just pointing out that, you know, the residents in Whistle Hollow have been waiting for this play structure. They're gonna see this, they're gonna see that it's gonna be finished at the end of October, and they're gonna wonder, okay. Now we have to wait till next year to use it.
But if you started at September thirty, it wouldn't be finished till the end of September, so how would that be that much different?
Well, some of them started earlier than that, September.
August twenty-fourth, okay.
I mean, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing out there what I see.
You're still gonna, you're still gonna have a month, right? It's still gonna fall into the, into the autumn season, right?
Yeah.
We're still there. So, it's just not a project, it, had we tendered it earlier, much earlier, then we would have had it for the summer, but we didn't tender it early enough. That's the mistake that was made. So now we gotta live with that mistake and try and, you know, do it at a, at a good cost. And if they, you know, our CAO can say, the earliest you can start, the better, right? You can go that direction, just get it done as quickly as you can.
And that's, that's the intent, when, when the package arrives, um, with their, uh, their availability is to get it in and get it built as soon as possible. They're giving, they're giving a, a hard start date, October first, certainly the intent is to be in there as soon as possible.
Well, if it's a custom build too, then they have to, they have to actually make it. If it's not, you don't know that the manufacturing company that they're using has all of this in stock. Or not in stock, and whether or not, you know, what is the availability of the stock as well, right? So, that's also dependent on when the start date is, how quickly can they get it? And I know, I, and I, and I know J.D. Penner, and I know they're always a little bit more pricier than everybody else. And I know that from working with them. So, I mean, if you want to, uh, sit down with the CEO and go through it with them, that's, I'm fine with the pricing.
Well, that's, just raising those points, that's all. Any other comments, please? Okay, so next is, uh, four point, four point two, financial statements.
Um, I'm just, Mayor, if I may, I, it looks, I've gone through the financial statements and it looks to me like we have a bit of a deficit at this point, and that's because we haven't got our taxes in yet, is that correct?
That's correct, the tax levy is added in as of June. So your next, uh, set of statements, we'll see, uh, that we will have a surplus as of June.
Uh, I'm gonna ask to see, see a full question, Mayor, if I may?
Full, full?
Um, I just got my tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, there was quite a credit from Seven Oaks, in fact, I got two credits.
Yeah, so the tax bills this year, they do look a lot different compared to prior years. Uh, you have your education property tax credit on your bill as well as your, uh, education tax credit that was originally issued via check in the fall.
Okay.
Uh, those will no longer be coming, your credit has been applied directly to your tax bill.
Okay, so is it my understanding that there's like a big tax credit this year and then not next year, or what?
Correct, so it's for twenty twenty-four, you still have your education property tax credit and then your education ta- tax credit rebate, right? Uh, that portion is still fifty percent of your school taxes. For twenty twenty-five, the NDP government has changed that, it'll be a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, if you pay school taxes less than fifteen hundred, you will get the full school tax amount back. If you pay more than fifteen hundred towards school taxes, your max credit will be fifteen hundred for twenty twenty-five.
That's with the property tax or with the property tax and rebate combined?
That's the, just the rebate, so they're removing, my understanding is they're removing both of those tax credits that you currently see on your tax bill. And you'll have one line item, uh, up to fifteen hundred dollars for twenty twenty-five. So they've made some big adjustments for next year.
Yeah, yeah, that's a big loss.
Yes, for many people.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, so, sorry, did you want me to go through them?
Just, please, go through them.
So, as mentioned by Counselor Cliber, you do see on your balance sheet here, you have a deficit of two point four. The reason being, as I mentioned earlier, we have not added our tax levy into, uh, our financial statements. Um, we don't do that until we actually get the download from the province, that's how everything is added into our, uh, financial reports, is via the download, uh, from the province, uh, we don't manually make those entries. The...
I got, I got a question.
Yeah?
So on your surplus, you have surplus beginning of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So is that actually from beginning of the year or are you just adjusting it every month?
No, so that will be, it, you may have seen it adjust over the last couple of months, because I'm finalizing twenty twenty-three. Um, there's been some movement, uh, we had our, uh, surplus transfers to reserve, so you'll see that, we'll adjust that amount. Um, you'll also see if there was any kind of little adjustments for any receivables that needed to be added in or any payables that needed to be added in as well. Um, so that would fluctuate a little bit. Uh, twenty twenty-three is pretty much wrapped up, um, so those will be going to the auditor shortly. I'm just waiting for them to respond to me to give me an official date as to when they can attend our office. Uh, and then the PSAB adjustments, those are all linked towards, uh, to, uh, the TCA, so our tangible capital asset adjustments for our mention, or, sorry, our, our amortization, getting a little tongue tied here. Um, so that will change annually as well, uh, as per our PSAB legislation, because we do operate on a cash basis. At year end, we have to record our amortization on our assets as well. Uh, so we just plug it in there and it balances our statements.
So you're still adjusting the twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three is done, yeah, so the adjustment, all the adjustments have been made. So that, that number, that eleven five five one, will stay at that. Unless the auditor comes back with some adjustments, I can't foresee him doing so, but that will be our final, uh, year end carryover.
So in the beginning of the year, we approved the year end statement, so just to make changes to that statement?
Uh, just minor changes, it was, it's a couple thousand here and there. But the large one that, uh, you're probably noticing there was a large difference is due to the surplus transfer from surplus to reserve.
So that does, so like in January, at the end of January, you had a reserve, uh, surplus of, uh, beginning of the year surplus of thirteen million?
Yeah.
And now you have a surplus of eleven point five million?
Right.
So that's a one point five million dollar adjustment, is that right?
Yep, there was, yep.
And you call that a little adjustment or?
Well, that, that's due to the surplus transfers from surplus to reserve.
Okay.
Uh, that council had approved.
Oh, earlier, we were...
Yep.
Well, that's...
Yeah, so that, it would've been adjusted, uh, in April as well. Um, they, I think the resolution was the end of March.
Okay.
And the adjustment was made as of the end of March.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Uh, so the next statement is our operating statement. Um, I'm sure council has seen this, so we have our revenues on the first page and a little bit on the second page. And then we have our expenses for each department on page three, yeah.
So your expenses for government services is eight hundred thousand dollars, which is higher than it's been in the previous three months by quite a bit. Actually, it works out to four hundred thousand dollars last month alone. I'm, I'm wondering if it's some one-time payments that you're doing or?
Let me just double check for you and I can probably... So we had, uh, there was wages and benefits.
Yeah.
We had a little bit of movement within the department, um, that would have contributed to that, as well as we had some professional and contract services. Uh, those items that we seen a large jump in. We had, um, I believe that is, we had a payment for, I wanna say our tax assessment levies. Uh, that we paid out about two hundred and thirty thousand, so that would be a large jump in there in the professional contract services.
Where's that, where is?
Uh-huh.
Say that again, that's what?
It was two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
So that's where you would see a large jump in your professional, uh, con- and contract services, so that's that three forty.
Yeah, so the two and three, that's tax, I didn't quite catch what you said there.
Sorry, I, I believe it is, was for our assessment services.
Okay, oh, and that's where we paid the individual, or?
Uh, we paid the province.
We paid the province, okay, and that's why it's called, okay.
Yeah, so you'll have a big jump there, um, also if, uh, the journal entries aren't completed, it depends on staff schedules, uh, but if the... Uh, but if the journal entry wasn't quite completed by the time I ran the statements last month, um, I believe we ran them earlier last month. Uh, so the last, the journal entry for the ending of April may have not been processed at the time of printing of the statements.
Okay. And what was the movement in in?
In the wages and benefits.
And what was the movement in wages, that was the movement?
It could be the, it could be a journal entry for payroll, it could also be benefit payments. Uh, M E B P, uh, health and dental, those type of items as well.
Do you pay that every month?
We do pay it monthly, yes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah. Could have just honestly been a timing issue, like if we printed the statements earlier than we normally do, uh, it might not catch a payment.
Okay.
And then the next month, you'll have two payments that'll show up on your statements. Uh, so the, like I said, these are all the department um expenses on those page, on the page two, uh, three and four. And then you have your transfer from reserve. So these are all the capital projects that have been approved uh throughout the year. So as you can see, there's some things that have started to uh experience some expenses towards. The largest one here is the truck that was delivered, our sending cloud truck, that was delivered and paid in that month. Uh, and then we have our uh fiscal services. Those are our um financial loan or loan payments or debt pay adventure payments and whatnot. Um, and then we have down here our transfers to reserve. So these are all the approved items minus this one here, which is revenues uh for M P I uh claims that are made by the fire fire department. So every time they attend a vehicle um situation, emergency situation, uh, if a claim is made, M P I will reimburse the R M for those expenses. Um, and the and the other four have were approved through budget.
So those, that's was transferred into?
Yeah, those are trans- directly transferred into reserves automatically.
So that, does that show up as revenue or not?
It shows up as revenue and expense, so they offset each other? So it's a nil effect to your surplus.
But that show up as revenue, that's twenty four thousand and you transfer?
Yeah, it's part of your tax levy.
Right?
It's part of your tax levy.
Yes, okay.
Uh, next, we have our summary of our reserves. So we have what we have actually in our bank account, what is due to reserves. And this will change throughout the year as we make purchases for the capital items that have been approved. Uh, and then again, we always need a debit and a credit, so you need your assets and your liabilities. Here is the reserve fund, the current surplus, uh, which is the same, the current balance of your reserves. Uh, then we skip into our utilities. So the first section is River's Edge. Here's our River's Edge balance sheet. As you'll see, there is a deficit. That is because our quarter two revenues have not been recorded. They're recorded as of June thirtieth. So you'll see on your next statement, you will have a surplus there. Um, and then we have our statement of operations. So all of our expenses, penalties, the top part here is our revenues that we've received. Uh, as you can see, this is, oops, sorry, this twenty three is one quarter. And then we have our expenses for the operating of the actual utility. There's a couple year end entries that'll be done later on. Uh, so that would include administration salaries as well as the phone and uh data plan. And then administration materials and supplies. So that is anything that uh we use for printing and mailing the utility bills. We do a annual year end sum and do a transfer at the end of the year. Uh, next, we go into the reserves, so they have a reserve account. Um, currently, they're sitting at one hundred and ninety seven thousand. Following that is our sewer operating utility. So here's our balance sheet. You'll see here, we have a surplus currently. And then we go into our statement of operations. You have all your revenues at the top and your expenses below. Um, you will see here, we paid our quarter one. Quarter two will be following shortly this month, uh, once the report is submitted. Again, a couple items like I mentioned previously, they will be uh journaled at the end of the year. So here's our surplus again showing this matches what's on your balance sheet. So we have sitting at uh one hundred and fifty five thousand. And then we jump into the reserve. So they currently have uh six hundred and ninety eight thousand. This is for all uh properties that are connected to the sewer utility. Uh, these would be the surpluses that have been realized over the last ten years, uh, transferred into a reserve. These are not to be used for general sewer. It is strictly for anything that is linked to the sewer utility itself. Uh, so if there is a lift station that needed repairs or replacement, uh, any of the lines, um, but it is not, these funds cannot be used for new sewer connections.
Oh, is that what you mean, okay?
That's what I mean, yeah.
I was.
General, new connections, I should say, yeah, so any new projects, uh, this is for the existing sewer.
So in the future, if you're replacing the sewer, that's what you use that fund?
Yes, yeah, so that is what the P U B likes to see, is that we have enough funds to fund a future replacement. I mean, we're talking many, many years from now. Although we do have a couple of older areas that will be a lot sooner than the new sewer that's been put in.
So this is not for repairs either?
Yeah, you can, yeah, council can do a resolution to pull from the reserve for major repairs.
Okay, for you need a reservation?
Mm hmm. Uh, then we skip into our water utility. So here's our balance sheet. You'll see there's a slight deficit currently. The water always shows a deficit in the beginning of the year until the revenues start to pick up. Revenues generally pick up starting quarter two and three because people are lot in their grass. So we realize more more revenues that way. Um, and that, so at the top here is our, this is our statement of operations, sorry, and we have our revenues on the top here. Uh, there's a couple items, the hydrant rentals, those are recorded at the end of the year. I count all the hydrants that we have connected to the water system and record uh revenue based on that. Uh, consumer sales, that is for any um water that is used that is not metered. So if we have someone who uh connects to a hydrant uh that is, it's metered through a hydrant meter, we bill that back. Um, same with uh line flushing uh for any new developments. We bill that back to the developer or uh the company that is doing the line flushing. So generally, that revenue is not significant, but we do realize some of it each year.
Mr. Mayor, just on on that note, I have a question. I see like Vic's water truck and stuff like that go to our reservoir.
Yeah, so.
Wha- what's happening there?
They're pulling water, it's directly through Carche, it has nothing to do with the municipality.
Okay.
Um, there's two different meters. So there's the meter for us, and then there's a meter for the the truck fill station. Uh, each company, from my understanding, has an individual code they have to punch in, and that's how it logs their uh cubic meters that they pull. Carche directly bills them. We don't see any of those revenues. Uh, and then you have your expenditures down below, and you'll see that your deficit matches the same on your balance sheet.
Excuse me, so I have a question.
Mm hmm.
You were talking about hydrant.
Hydrant rentals?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's what uh Carche gets that figure too?
No, so the hydrant rentals is for act- the hydrants throughout the R M.
Okay.
The municipality has to pay the water utility for a hydrant rental. That's deemed for fire services, fire protection. Um, we don't meter how much water they actually use. We, it's nearly impossible. They'd have to carry around a meter box and connect it every time they wanna use it. They give me a rough estimate, so we do bill that back as well. We do a transfer, internal transfer. But the the R M itself has to rent those hydrants from the water utility.
We rent the hydrants?
Yeah.
Not physically the hydrants, the hydrants we own, it's the place.
It's the placement and the the use, the able to, the ability to use them.
So does municipality track line loss on water? For the amount of water received and the amount of water that we drive, do you track that line loss?
I do have a spreadsheet, yeah, I do track everything that is metered and that is estimated to be used via line flushing and whatnot. Um, and I do know which, how much we're billed for and what I can physically track and the difference.
So what's the percentage line loss then?
I don't know at this time. I, yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can definitely get that for you.
So you can see if there was a, I guess that's how you'd monitor if there's a break or?
Yeah.
Yeah, on my side, yes. Um, the utility uh employees, they drive around and they'll be able to tell if there is a line break, if the water will pool at the top of the ground. Um, they do notify me if it is past our reservoir where it's metering. If it's coming into the reservoir, there's nothing tracking it coming out of our side. Um, so that would be Carche loss. Uh, and then we have a water uh reserve. You can see that they have a small reserve balance of one hundred and thirty thousand. So that would be for any future repairs and maintenance uh for the current water system in place. And then we have our summary here, all our capital projects, uh, what we've spent so far year to date as of May thirty first. Uh, and then we have anticipated start and completion dates as well as anything that has been completed. Questions, comments?
Question? I I see like the the um fire department, their turnout gear, turnout gear dryer and the reflector, like as that started to go, there's no timeline.
Yeah, I've reached out, I haven't received anything from our fire chief. I will reach out again, though.
Cause we we did go, we did get a quote through canoe.
Yeah.
So I figured we had a quote, why wouldn't they just act on it?
They're, they're on their own schedule.
It it doesn't make sense to me, but they get hot water tanks replaced. But they don't do something that they've been looking for for eight years.
Yeah, yeah, no, I will definitely follow up um with our fire chief to see where they're at with that, as he did not respond to my previous um email.
Yeah, I agree with the Council Campbell. They were during budget, they were quite adamant that they wanted that, so.
Yeah.
Are they gonna have to order it maybe and does it take time?
It hasn't been ordered.
Potentially, but I, as far as I know, it hasn't been ordered. I haven't. But like I said, I haven't received an update, so um, nothing's come across my desk for it. But I will definitely follow up.
Go ahead.
Since we're on this one, uh, P R number fifteen, the shelter belts, the shelter and benches north side of Grassmere Walking Bridge?
Mm hmm.
It still has a T B A, T B D, so that's on the developer. Um, how come we don't have dates starting on that? The only reason I'm asking on that is I took a walk over that bridge last weekend, and when you get to the south side of the bridge, there is no sidewalk. It's literally two feet of grass, you can barely see the gravel.
Okay.
You know, we have a bridge sitting there, the grass along the walkway on the north side is two feet high. That land hasn't started to get leveled yet. You know, like we're we're into July, like before we, the reason I'm getting on that is a lot of this development, their landscaping is falling way behind. And I think we just need to start, you you know, pushing on it. Residents are getting upset, they've got their landscaping done on their homes and in the newer areas, prior to the developer even having trees in or, you know, roundabout cut that's three feet high. You know, we have to get on them to get this cut. I understand we can use rain, this and that, but they can, it's gotta been planned already for years. The this development isn't a year old, so.
Yeah, I will reach out to um our planner and see if she can uh provide a date, an update um or some insight as to what is exactly is going on.
And uh, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Counselor, to Counselor Bishetti's point, we we talked about this last year.
Mm hmm.
And he was supposed to level out that area. And and so that, you know, and saw it, that was the agreement. And now we're sitting here, it's next year and still nothing done.
I do believe the sale went through late last year, so I don't know if that was the reason for.
The sale?
The the land, originally it was owned by the R M.
But they've they've already got the land subdivided on the on the south side, there's already homes going up there, so there's enough time for them to, you know, get into that and.
Yeah, I'll reach out to our planner and see if, uh, like I said, if she can plan it or plan, provide an update or any insight as to uh where we're at with that or where they're at with that.
Maybe we could ask the planner to provide them with a date that we want it accomplished.
Okay.
Maybe it needs to be done by the end of July. This is basic leveling and uh of the ground, right, uh, Counselor Bishetti?
Well, just even that walkway, I have residents from Park View Point asking me saying, we have this bridge there, but we can't even get to it. You know, it's.
I see no reason why that date couldn't be accomplished.
By the end of the month.
What can you give back?
So some of them have already been completed?
Uh, just the one, yes, so that's the one that's been like three years in the making. Um, it was delayed due to COVID and then I think continuously delayed due to that, just. Um.
Yeah.
So they finally, finally delivered.
So the arch and metal end you have for July thirty first, is that, it's done, it's done?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't um, we haven't finalized it yet on our side. Uh, we're waiting for our, for um the information from the developer for the costs and whatnot. We've requested their documents.
I've seen the arch.
Mm hmm.
See the second part, the roundabout?
Yep.
That's done too?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's for sure.
What's different is I can see that my business now, they've cut the trees where they're putting the pond, and I could literally see across the perimeter, it's a very different view, so.
Yes, it is. Okay. Is that it? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Crystal. Uh, now we're down to four point five point one, request for service.
Okay, for the uh June report, we had a total number of requests of a hundred thirty five. Um, so of these, we have ninety uh remaining open and forty five that are closed. What we're seeing is sort of the usual seasonal increase that um a large amount of these have been oxus wheat complaints and um uh particularly um in the bylaw enforcement area. Uh, we've also seen a substantive increase in complaints in the public works area as well. Um, a lot of these were um difficult to deal with in late June as we had some heavy rainfalls and and some of the cutting activities um have been delayed, but we're making up ground now and catching up now. So the average day to close on on these service requests was six in in June. So that's sort of an overall summary of the June uh.
Right? I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, that's a summary of the June R F S reports.
Okay, that, anyone got any questions? I think, I'll wait till the end. Oh, I think I got some questions, but we'll go to the.
Okay, and then uh for the uh January to uh June uh report, if you take a look at it, you can see again uh seasonal increase in both public works and and bylaw. Uh, you also notice, if you take a look, we've made some good progress in terms of closing some of the backlog of these reports, particularly in uh in the public works area where over the course of the year, we've we've had fifty nine um reports opened and and have closed a hundred twenty six. So we've made some good progress at public works in terms of closing some of the backlog there.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So just on that, like you're tracking the open, the closed. Or I'm wondering if you're able to track, uh, so when it's open, is there communication with the the originator of the R F S? And then when it's closed, is there any other communication that's done back to the originator of the R F S?
That would that would depend on the nature of the complaint. If the nature of the complaint uh was pertaining to bylaw enforcement, policy and privacy issues, restricted amount of communication. Policy and privacy issues restrict the amount of communication that, that we can have for feedback to residents. In terms of activities and, and, and the concern and, and how it's being dealt with. If the nature of the concern is um operational or, or, or otherwise, then uh, then feedback uh can be provided, is provided.
Okay, but on the first example that you were talking about, could you not, you don't need, like, do you have, can you not to go back to the residents? Say, listen, we've got your request, we're working on it. And then when it's closed, you can say that it was dealt with satisfactorily without getting to details?
Um. Well, we can, we can certainly say that uh we've gotten your, we've gotten a request and we'll respond to it. Uh, in a lot of cases, um, these kind of issues uh remain ongoing as well. So depending on, again, I think there's, there's, there's limited amount of information and, and as per the, the RM policy as well. In terms of how much feedback we can give on these.
I guess what I'm asking is that in the, in the open, can you say with regards to the number of open cases, can you say that there was communication to those residents? And when it's closed, can you say, yes, you communicated it back to the residents?
We could say that.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
On a, on a, on each bylaw complaint, usually in a bylaw complaint.
Just a simple check, yes or no, like if there's, if it's outstanding, then at least if we can say, what was the issue here? Why wasn't it? Why wasn't there any communication? Maybe, maybe it was sensitive, maybe we couldn't get back, maybe the person moved away or something, I'm not sure, but. I guess it's about level of service.
Yeah, y- y- um.
On the given example, we had a lady on Corona, which is now your jurisdiction, who had her property damaged from silt. Right? And so she wanted it looked into and repaired. And she received um. An email saying, this RFS is now closed. No explanation.
Okay, and that's not a, that's not a bylaw issue, so certainly some more clarification can be applied on that.
She phoned and I phoned and we found out that the reason they didn't, they didn't repair it was because it was on her property. So they wouldn't repair it because it's on her property, even though they damaged it.
So that feedback, that feedback wasn't, and that feedback wasn't provided to her, so she wasn't able to respond to it?
No.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a circumstance where, where communication back could.
Well, and the thing is, it's happened to me where I've been told that is closed and there's no reason really given. Then I call in for my bylaw enforcement and say, why did you close it? Well, we closed it because it was deemed this. And I said, well, that's not the case. So there's no communication with the person that's closing the file. And the person that's uh done the report or who's, who's done the RFS. Like, we're always encouraging our residents to do an RFS, but then when it's closed, they get, well, it's closed, but they don't tell you why it's closed. And they, there has to be communication with the resident to say, okay, this is why I closed it. Well, did you know this? It shouldn't be closed because of this. Well, you'll have to talk to this, I got, you have to talk to the CAO, that's what I got. So there should be some communication with that resident for clarification sometimes, right? If you're gonna close something and the resident doesn't agree with it and has more information, then it should be reopened. There, there has to be more com- I have to, I agree with councillor Pat again, there has to be more communication with the resident.
Yeah, I'm just looking to close a loop, uh, and, and for the open ones to give some reassurance that.
It's still working.
Provide the resident that we have given some confidence. Yes, we acknowledge you've received your issue. We'll get back to you in like whatever thirty, ninety days. And then when it's closed, let them know why it was closed. Um, you know, I, I understand that we, we can't always help everybody, but at least they know why it was closed.
Okay, we'll take a look at our processes and uh see if we can provide better feedback on these.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have one question there.
Go ahead, councillor.
On the, on the uh June, January to June's report statistic. It says illegal wastewater dumping, ten open, one closed. Nine open, one closed. Ten in all, altogether, right? We can't do anything about that, though. That's my understanding, right, on illegal wastewater dumping. That's supposed to be sustainability.
Um, e- environmental sustainability, provincial, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we report them and advise them and um. Push them for enforcement of these, um.
But nothing's ever happened, then?
Um. Response in a lot of cases has been uh prolonged.
Prolonged, okay.
We, we are aware of some fines being issued in the municipality.
Okay, there's, so there have been some fines issued, but we've got nine open right now, one closed. So what I'm wondering is if. We can somehow work with the province to issue those fines. If there's some collaboration we could do with them to say, okay, look, this is what's happening. Their, their response always is, we don't have enough people to go out there and look and blah, blah, blah. But if we, if we had pictures and we sent them pictures and say, okay, look, here's the pictures, here's what's happening, here's a video. If you can't make it out, can you still take care of this? Because there, from my understanding, the last time that we contacted them, their big thing is, well, we have to have mileage coming out. We have to have somebody coming out. We don't have enough people. So if we provided photographic evidence or video evidence. Would they accept that for enforcing, enforcement? Or could we issue the fine?
We could ask and see if they would uh, I, I don't know whether they would deem that a, um adequate. To levy a fine, but they, it may um help move up the priority.
With a hose pouring into Grassmere Creek.
Yes.
Dumping sewage and you have got a video of it, that's evidence.
Well, in, in blatant circumstances such as that, but if, if, if it's a wet lawn and it's difficult to determine whether it's a field. Septic field or not, they would, at that point, they may, it may incent them to come out and take a closer look. But something as blatant as um uh the pumping of a, a holding tank, um, you know.
Into Grassmere Creek?
Yeah.
We've seen it.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we can follow up and we can ask them whether or not uh, you know, that would assist them with their enforcement activities.
Yeah, we should, we should say, could we issue the fine on your behalf if we have photographic or video evidence? If we can provide that to you, would you, you know, deputize us to do the, to do the fines somehow? Because they're not getting to it clearly. And somehow we wanna stop this in our community. It is an environmental issue. I mean, if you're dumping into Cross, Grassmere Creek, it's going to the river.
Councillor Bichette, you have some comments?
I just, just wanna butt in on that. Um, I did contact conservation on that one. And I had, cause I had the video and they said, we can't prove that it's not just gray water or uh whatever.
Sledge.
They can't tell that it, that you can't test to see if it's uh water from your tank, your septic. So that was the answer.
You can smell it. But we have to do something more than what they're doing. So I don't know if we can, if we can push it, if we can ask, if we can try and do something because.
Holding tank.
The more holding tanks that go up, the more problem we're gonna have. And all of, of um the creeks is all gonna be holding tanks.
Well, the developers are hearing it. They heard it tonight, just right here from a developer that's willing to lose five lots. You know, just to make them big enough to put septic fills in, so.
We'll follow up with the province again.
Yeah.
And um. In an effort to uh. Keep some action.
Yeah, well, maybe if we keep on asking, we'll get some results. Sometimes that's what we have to do, is just keep being persistent with it.
Okay, so I guess more or less, uh, I'm probably gonna build up on what councillor Friday on the councillor Pat can was saying. But I guess when I take a look at some of the numbers here, you had um two hundred and six, for, this is from June to uh, January to June. You had two hundred and six closes of incidents and recorded four hundred and one hours. And that means if I divide those numbers in together, each closing took one point nine seven hours to do, which I think is low. And I think it might be, I, I'm now just making speculations, is that I heard one time that if there are. Five complaints of the same thing, they close four of them and leave one open. Is that what happens?
What we did is we made a push uh a couple of months back in terms of cleaning up and catching up on some of the backlog of these. And, and there was a substantive backlog of open files that need to clean, that we need to clean up. So we were in better position to understand what work exactly needed to be done and where was our priorities and where did we really need to be focusing our resources? Cause we just had a lot of open files and so there was a push to look back and close either the stale ones. The redundant ones or, or um sort of the um. The, the not material ones in any case. And so um, we did that and that's why. Um, there was a substantive catch up on the backlog, on cleaning up our records and where we are. And that's why in a lot of cases you'll see a turnaround uh in relatively short periods of times, in the, in the relatively short period of times allocated.
So they're still doing that catch up in June?
There's still some and, and, and I, I, I think there's still some more to do in bylaw as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess uh if, if we're gonna respond to each individual complaint that comes in. And maybe that's why they're getting, the file has been closed because there's been five complaints already. And they closed those four and they leave one. My thinking is that we should leave all the complaints open and close them all at once because by closing. Four to the five really doesn't put a microscope, put a magnifying glass on what the issue is. Cause if there's ten com- five complaints coming from one issue and we close the one, it sort of minimizes the complaint.
The file will have the record of complaints and the record of dialogue and the record of action that had, had been on it. So when you open it, it'll show that, you know, if, if the resident had called back or, or, and what action had been taken and, and so forth. So it, it's, it's a matter of, of having a single file, but, but all the action and activity is uh, is recorded within that complaint.
No, yeah, okay, that I understand, but what happens when, you know, if Mike puts in a complaint on Willis and I put in a complaint on Willis? Does one of our files get closed and ones stay open or do they both stay open? Even though there's similar complaints, maybe, you know, the ditch is leaking on five Willis Road and I put in a complaint for. Number ten Willis Road, the ditch is leaking. Does those complaints stay open or is those just, they distinguish the, are they two different complaints? Or are they considered one complaint?
I think that's two different complaints. That's, that'd be two different complaints at that point.
Or it would be, okay.
Yeah.
So what's an example that you're talking about then, where you close?
Like if somebody phones and complains about an issue today and then phones again tomorrow and then phones again Thursday.
Oh, the same person? Nice.
And if it's a different person that phones for the same reason?
Or you could have multiple complaints on one property.
Yeah, if, if it's the exact complaint for the exact property, we would combine the complaints into one record. But it's still viewed as however many complaints there are, there are.
So how, how, how does, how does it show up on this report? Does it show up as one or five?
That would show up as five.
Okay.
But four are closed, I, it would be my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
The complaints are really not dealt with, but four are closed because you combined them.
That doesn't match.
It's kind of misleading.
Yeah, it doesn't match. It doesn't match. My, my first initial reaction is it doesn't match.
Uh, it doesn't match in what regard?
Well, you're closing, you're closing complaints based on, on, it's still open in one side and it's closed on another side. It doesn't match.
Well, I guess you're combining is what you do.
It's, it's less a complaint registration than a request for service to a property. So if you're dealing with an unregistered car at an address, it's. It's just one registered car at an address. It's not ten, just because ten people have reported it.
But I think that the ten people that reported it should be communicated somehow. So if you're gonna close it for the nine and leave it open for the one, do the, do the nine that you closed it for, are they in the loop of communication?
That's how it's supposed to work. So everyone who would have a complaint in a si- can I, if I may?
Yeah.
Everyone in a situation like that should have a, an email saying, we've received your request for service. It has been combined with, um, it has been combined with this record. And, and the way it's supposed to work is if it's a bylaw contravention, we will say that, you know, we will, we will check. And if there's a contravention, we will work to resolve it. Um, and, and so in that way, we communicate what we can. But the resident would still have a reference number to a request for service to refer to so that we can communicate with them. And if they have a question, they can call back and refer to that and get the latest update if it hasn't been communicated.
I hear what you say. I find that they're really, uh, I understand why you're doing it. But I, I think it also distracts, detracts from where the real problems are. And it, because if five people are complaining about, you know, uh, cars, then that's an issue to those five people. And we're not seeing that as five complaints, we're seeing it as one. So we think, okay, it's only one. It's really not an issue. But if we saw five, we think, hey, wait a minute, like, there are people getting upset because of this. It's not just one, it's a group of people. So we're not seeing the mass of people that are upset with it. So we're not really hearing what the residents are saying because of it. Cause we're all ruling it down to one. I, I, I understand what you're doing. I understand why you're doing some of it, but still, I, I take a look at this, this form here. And this form should be telling everybody where the issues are. And you know, like we had a year to date, right now we have, where is it? A year to date, we had forty four complaints on roads. And fifty complaints on drainage. That's what we have year to date, but was there more than forty four complaints? Because if there was, then that tells me that there's really a big issue with the road. And I understand that weather is some of it today, but, and same with drainage. Last year, we only had, year to date, last year, we had sixty seven complaints. This is all the whole year, last year. Uh, sixty seven complaints on roads and twenty, thirty three complaints on drainage. And that's over twelve months. This is over six months. So.
So the, the, the reporting, or the, the package itself, the, the statistic package itself is less than perfect. It's, it.
No, I, I understand that.
It, it, it doesn't have the functionality and it doesn't have the flexibility that we, that, you know, we would like to provide you with those types of reports. Um, and so we've started to look at some different ways of reporting on these and, you know, we made some progress on it. Um, admittedly, uh, it's, it's one of the to-dos on the list is to provide. Better information on this for us and for you. But the, the package that we have now isn't really all that well designed to do this.
No. Go ahead, councillor.
Just on that note, um, a couple of the other councillors brought it up. Instead of a, you know, where there's five and four are closed, I wouldn't wanna see that resident getting a email back. Cause you, you get the email back through the system saying that it's closed. It was, it should be more an email back that it's already been, this incident has already been recorded. It is, it is being worked on and that resident, you know, awareness that it's not just closed. It's already recorded and being worked on, you know, thank you for your, and at least they know that it's recorded. It's not just closed. And then they're, you know, phoning someone at this table going, well, why is mine closed? And then we find out, well, cause three other people opened it and one's left open.
Well, for sure, we've got, we've got to take a look at our feedback.
Cause it's, well, yeah, it's just an automatic reply that they received your, you know, they received your request. I guess just different wording would, would make people feel like they're being listened, listened to, right?
Just to you, Theodore, I know that this is less than perfect and I appreciate the work that you've been doing with it so far this year and trying to sort of this out and. Yeah, just to you, Theodore, I know that this is less than perfect, and I appreciate the work that you've been doing with it so far this year and trying to sort of this out and you know, it it is comforting to know that there is work being progressed, steady progress on it, it's just that, you know, if we can improve it any other ways, then should just continue forward on it and
For sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's a council priority.
Right.
It's it's a council priority. It's one of our number-one priorities is is enforcement.
Oh, I'm talking about, uh, oh yeah, Councilor, are you talking about all of the complaints or just this?
Yeah, yeah.
So yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so that takes us down to area four point five one.
Four point eight, what was it?
Four point eight point one, yes, traffic.
Okay, so on on uh traffic calming, I guess we uh we want to discuss some of the recent events uh relating to speeding in the trail development and some possible actions. And so in particular, I guess um um I I I'm not sure what some of the council's perspective is on this, but we have budgeted twenty-four thousand dollars in in twenty twenty-four for speed reader signs. And the intent is uh to look for two sets of two signs that were planned. They have an estimated cost sort of around eight thousand dollars per set. We could be looking at getting a third set of signs for trails, that might be within the budget. Um particularly as we had applied for a grant for the speed reader signs from NPI. But we were unsuccessful in this grant in the first round. So there is a second intake for this grant, it's expected in early August. Could be as much as fifty percent contribution to these signs. So um one way or another, we're looking to proceed um towards the end of August, and I guess one option for the trails development would be um i- i- if budget permits, or if we're able to negotiate sort of a larger um a volume price on on some of the units, is maybe go with four sets and and potentially look at at placing them in that in that development, or or any other uh options that um you care to discuss.
Go ahead, Councilor Shady.
Thanks for bringing this up, I I requested this the other day, um can you get us a cost on installing speed humps, speed? I don't want to say speed bumps, but the speed humps, cause they're
Yeah, ma- maybe, pr- perhaps what you're talking about is is known as speed tables, which is sort of elevated kind of platforms as opposed to speed bumps itself.
Yes.
Yeah, we could and and um we could probably bundle that with our our asphalt program on the roadworks right now. Um if you remember, we do have uh some money available to expand purchases within that or expand the scope of that that project somewhat, I think there's fifty-eight thousand dollars remaining, um so we could take a look at at what the cost of, or 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 what it would take to do that, it probably wouldn't be very expensive, we'd bundle it in at the unit rate. Maybe just have some asphalt put down. We could do that, um and come back to you with some costs if you'd like. Um I'd like to see that for the speed readers, cause at at the, right now, they're not following the sign that says fifty, so
Yeah.
you know, it it's
Where is the where is the most of the speeding taking place, when they come into the development?
It's it's all the way around, like they're racing every straightaway.
They go straight?
It's all straightaways, like
Every straightaway, yeah.
I think we get some enforcement in there, and I think that's gonna be your best bet. I know uh public
The what?
Enforcement. Enforcement.
Oh.
Like get some RCMP in there a couple of times, right, and it'll spread like wildfire the word that, you know, I just Public Works isn't, I know isn't a fan of uh s- s- speed calming or anything like that, so I just, I I I understand, but people are gonna speed no matter what.
Yeah, it it speed tables, I think, um are a little bit easier on when when stone clearing and otherwise uh than than speed bumps per se. I mean, we we did we did install um uh s- some of some of these traffic calming devices or or in River Springs Drive with the speed bumps there, and and we do still get speeding complaints out of River Springs Drive.
You're always gonna get them.
Despite the installation, so, I mean.
But Okay, I'm okay with getting us a price on this, but before I would even move ahead with this, Ms. Shaw, I think you remember when we did a survey down sorry, Mr. CEO, it was before, we did a survey down River Springs.
Correct.
You know, where we asked the residents, would they be acceptable to this, would they not? I would almost want to leave it to the residents in the area. It's what I'm hearing from some, but I'd like to hear from all of them, you know, like that's what we're here to do. And almost send out a survey, you know, with questions, have you, are you noticing speeders, or, you know, would you like to see this, would you like to see speed reader boards? Cause I know going going in there, like I had a resident ask me, well, why aren't we lowering the speed limit? And my straight answer to him was, well, it says fifty on there and they're doing seventy now. So what does it make you think a thirty is gonna read, you know? There there's just gotta be different ways to do it, and we had an incident there, you know, almost two weeks ago. A vehicle went right through the garage, right through a garage, uh through two lots and into a garage. I don't know what the circumstances of that, like what led to that, but it was on a corner, so.
I don't think you could take one instance, uh
Yes.
But there, like in my area, there was a car in a ditch two weeks ago and they actually hit the pole, all the airbags blown. And like if I showed you where it was, you know, you don't know how it could actually happen. Apparently where it is, it was a husband teaching uh a family member how to drive, right, and and it was like deep in the ditch, not just like, and then then hit a pole, every airbag went off.
But, you know, this is a condensed area, there's a lot of kids playing, and they're they're running out from cars, you know, things happen through there, and I don't want to wait till something happens, we gotta do whatever we can do to try and slow things down.
Okay, we'll come back with some costing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
It might have to be a combination of things. Just combine a couple of things, might have to put the signs up and add some speed tables because you gotta get the message out there, you gotta get them consistently slowing down.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify something to say, so uh you're you're gonna apply for a grant for the speed reader signs?
Uh, we did, and we're gonna reapply at the second intake, which is supposed to be um early August, and um depending on our success, then we'll we'll proceed.
So how long does it take before you find out that you?
Well, I think what we'd probably do is, after the second intake, we'll go ahead with with ordering the signs, and then we'll look at recovering that after the fact.
Okay. Good. Go ahead, go ahead.
Have you been in contact, um I think we all spoke to them at FCM, we were talking to a couple of different companies on that. And I'm sorry, have you been in contact with? They showed us different different kinds of signs, flashing lights, this and that, so.
We've had some some communication with them, once once it comes time, we'll go out, we'll get our quotes and we'll include that.
Okay, just to know the differences from one to another.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, now we're down to six point one, August newsletter. Does anyone have, uh, anyone wanna put into the August newsletter, or MLO would like to know, uh, Councilor Shady?
Um, I was in contact with our MLA, J D Deegan. And he was asking us about if there was space for him to you know, have something in there, you know, message from him and that kind of stuff, so if someone can reach out to him.
Yes, I've I've spoken with his office.
Okay.
Uh, and we have a plan to include something for the August newsletter and 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 going forward.
I'm sure they can even contribute financially towards it.
Anyone else? Okay, so now we're down to
Question period.
Oh, right down the line, question period, number seven. Can I incur, any questions?
Nora Alberg, just a comment further to the playground discussion tonight. Um for future consideration, I guess, um West St. Paul still does not have a fully accessible playground. And there are a number of um standards for accessible playgrounds out there. And all of them do agree that if you put any base, uh which is sand or pea gravel, then you do eliminate immediately anybody who has mobility or balance problems. So for future consideration, or at least if some playground that is developed is fully accessible for the children and the parents, then that would be helpful for the community.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of pea gravel. And I'll just say that as a council member, when you have children and you have strollers and you and you're trying to get your kids in strollers and get them to the playground, pea gravel's not your friend. Um, the city does asphalt, that way, I used to take my kids to the Memorial Park just because they had asphalt and I could roll the stroller in and everything was hunky-dory, so asphalt's preferable to me as well. And I think it would be for most of the parents.
Uh, I wanna thank Ms. Alberg for that comment, and the last month, we had our very first inaugural accessibility committee here in the arm of West St. Paul. And we are gonna be doing that, developing accessibility lens um for all of our public amenities, so appreciate the comment, and it's definitely work that we'll be undertaking as a committee.
Here, we're going to the three by four Baron Field Drive. I just have a comment about that, Claywell Park. I've had to remove pea gravel out of these structures. Comes very expensive because of the cats urinating and discarding in these places. And places that I did were in housing complexes and uh pea gravel was quite deep and because it was all completely landscaped in, we had to remove the material with wheelbarrows to the sidewalks and become very expensive, I did some full-time, one I was successful for, and they're very expensive. And I'm just wondering about this tender, why the price is so different? Because there's a rubber mat that they're using for for these things, I can't remember exactly what it is, but that's what they replaced it with. So it could be the difference of the other companies just foregoing the pea gravel and going into the second or the better product. That that may be it, I don't know, I didn't see the tender and I don't know what what it's what, but that may be it. But I know it's very expensive and the cats get in there, the people complain, and then you'll have to change it, so uh that's one comment I made. Another comment I have is about Ian's Road. Very dusty, and the cars are all white and the parking lots. I don't know if they had dust control put on him, I know uh truck come down Garden View and did put dust control on, but he didn't put, it didn't, he didn't seem to put dust control on like he's standing on the year. It seemed to me like he was at the end of the truck and he just made the trip. That's what it was, but it's still working. But I don't know if the dust controllers were on Ian's Road and then he gravelled it or whatever, it's very dusty, I mean, I come in here, the cars were destroyed and the oil department's drawing, imagine you're gonna get this here in place. So I'm just giving up the word, the road is good.
That's it.
Mayor, if I may, maybe we should, maybe we should look at that tender and see what, if the other tenders did have that sort of rubber mat to it, maybe let's look at that, cause that would be preferable. I've seen those rubber mat ones too. It's sort of like a congealed type of thing that they put down.
So can we get those other three, other four tenders just attached to our agenda for the next for the, just so we can see them before then?
Okay, okay, you want the you want the full bids, or did you want me to get back to you on what the landscaping and the product on the bottom was, or you want the full bid?
Full bid.
Full bid? Okay.
Counselor Clibber, I believe that's what the Memorial Park has now, is that rubber mat.
Yeah, and it's really good.
Did anybody else have any questions?
No. No comment? Okay. So we're gonna go on to camera now. So we have now come out of camera, the meeting is now adjourned, it is nine fourteen PM. The committee of the whole council meeting was adjourned at nine fourteen PM, thank you very much.